And that's for this call. I know, right? Cook, Hopkins, Odenhill, Patterson. We're doing great so far.
Everybody out.
Richardson.
Here.
Aaron Scott.
Here.
Bill Scott.
Here.
Womple.
Here.
Wormowski.
Here.
Willie.
Here.
Mary Hesker.
Here.
City Attorney.
Here.
Thank you. Item number one on the American Report is to discuss the proposal for services regarding the Jacksonville municipal landfill. We've been at this for a long, long time now, we've been.
I thought it was finished.
Well, it's finished, but we've run into some issues. We're trying to, what our main goal is, is to try to get the magical letter from Illinois EPA as far as final closure. We've done a lot of things out there over the years and we thought we were getting close a while back, but we kind of got dinged up on some things. So through the help of our city consultant Jeff Cresselli, we had a contact with Joel Gilz Erkels, who's here with us today. You know, we ironed out some things and Joel and Jeff have been out there and taking a look at things and then we talked internally a couple of times. We've also talked with Dan, who's been at this a long time too, haven't we, Dan?
Way too long.
We want to act on this as quick as we can because we all don't want to pay to continue paying a lease of over a hundred thousand dollars a year for that land. We want, the landowner wants it, we want the landowner to have it and have it closed. So with that, you know, Joel and I, Joel's, this is what he does. I mean, this is, he's an engineer, but he, and he does, does, he knows the workings of the Illinois EPA, he knows landfills, and I feel very comfortable because this is, this is a time matter with the Illinois EPA. We need to do some work out there and we want to get this resolved. So, you know, I hate kicking the can and we haven't been kicking the can, but we keep getting dinged on some things and we need to make those improvements so someday we can hopefully get that letter and say, you've done your good job, city, and hasta la vista. So, Dan, you got anything to add?
No, not really. Actually, the longer this goes on, more problems seem to seep to the surface, and leachate especially. And that's what we're trying to get under control. That's what EPA is concerned with as well. And with the contract with Joel and his firm, they'll address those issues of the proposal to EPA, what we're going to do immediately and a little bit more later this year to address the issues of the tourism. We're under a bit of a time constraint. We need to get back to EPA by August month, and that's why we're looking to you tonight. Although Joel's been working with the city and Jeff for the past several months putting some of this together, we didn't think it was going to come quite this quick, but here we are. Any questions at all? I think, did he get a copy of the material, the proposal in your packet or else emailed to you? It would have been fair gram information. And it was a resolution too that you should have received. Anyway, any questions on any of this? Joel?
Joel Spear.
To answer any questions you have.
Do you have anything to touch on? I mean, it's pretty straightforward stuff, but...
Yeah, the big issue right now is we need to make that response to the agency in fairly timely fashion. And we're going to request a meeting with them so that I can really have a dialogue to really, you know, make sure that we're all aligned and really get that path to the end, like you said, so we get that final affidavit for closure.
Any questions at all on this? If not, we'll be continuing to work on it tomorrow and later this week as we go forward. Okay, good.
I have a number two to discuss vending machine, contract that community park, which we've talked about this meeting. You know, Sean Smith and Mr. Corbatt Kors sent a proposal. They're in that business. That's not their full-time job, but they do that on the side. And they saw a need with the Casey's closing across the street from Community Park, that there wasn't vending at Community Park Building. There is vending, or there is a concession that's going on on Saturdays through the Soccer Association. However, during the week, when it's, a lot of activities there with practices during the week, there's really nothing. And they just thought it would be appropriate if they placed a vending machine there. We've talked internally back and forth a couple of times as far as percentages. We want to keep the same track as far as our, be fair with all our vendors, which we'd be asking Sean and Matt for six percent of the vending cost. Also, there needs to be, I believe, an outlet placed, an upgrade as far as electricity, an outlet where they plug in the machine and they pick that charge up as well. So it's just, you know, if it's good to go, I know Alderman Wormowski, last meeting, brought up as far as District 117 guidelines, as far as what they're going to offer and, and, you know, I don't, whatever you want to do there, I mean, it's, as a parent, I don't want to, I want to drink a Pepsi, but, but, you know, you know, I'm sure they'll have some option in there as far as a bottle of water or something like that, but...
It's five percent, right?
Five percent.
It says five percent, but we're, it is six percent. We're going to change that. It's an extra percent because we want to be uniform with Butch. Well, I'm sure it would be for one year or...
I think that's what I'm saying.
I mean, gentlemen, you're, you got anything to add? I mean...
I mean, the selection is going to be, we'll have a variety. We'll have water, we'll have Gatorade, maybe Powerade. The machine is going to be unbranded, so it allows us to put anything in there. Not, not all Pepsi, not all Coke, so we're selective. We're going to try to, the pricing on it is going to be equal to the JSA. So if there happened to be there on Saturday, which is where the most of the children will be there, they will have, the selection will be the same price. So we're not trying to undercut anybody. So we're going to keep the prices equal, even though some cases, we would probably be cheaper, but we don't want to have them to go next door and put their money in there and they could go right to the concession stand and get it there. But there'll be options and I would think, I would hope most of the kids during their playing, they'd be looking for water and Gatorade as their primary D. The soda, which I would suspect that would be for fans that just want to have that selection.
I thought Alderman Oldman had a lot of concerns about the vending machine cutting into sales during the JSA. So even if the price is the same, some kids might use that because it's just more convenient and they don't have to wait in line. Initially, you said something about turning it off or having it, having the computer know it can't then during a certain time or date, or is that a possibility?
I don't think on that machine.
Not a modelable proposal.
Have you guys?
Can JSA like flip the switch during their, when their concession thing's open or?
Because they can't because you turn off, electricity would turn off the machine, which results in having product that could, doesn't sustain cold, warm, cold, because that machine has a heater for the winter and a cooling system in the summer. So if you turn it on and off, it's, it's, it keeps the temperature right. If you turn it completely off, I'd be worried about the product.
Have you guys talked to anyone at JSA? I'm just curious. Have you guys done it?
No.
Do we have vending services here at the municipal building?
Yeah.
We did.
Yes, there is.
Okay. So is that through you or is that through someone else?
Not through.
Okay, it's through somebody else. And did we do a, how did we do that contract? Did we go out for bids or did we just do a?
I have never seen here before.
Yeah, I have not seen anything like that.
We've had different ones come and go even, you know, that had like peanuts and M&Ms and stuff like that. So, yeah, they, they wouldn't need to see one.
And how, I know we talked about last meeting, but how did we go about coming to this need that we needed a machine out there? Was it JHS or A?
JR.
JR is the case.
Yeah.
Who?
We didn't, we just didn't propose a one.
JSA, I think.
JSA. So, I mean, I guess my whole thing is we're doing it for the kids?
I would imagine just for, instead of, since the Casey's closed, they don't...
If you're out there for practice.
Yeah.
I'm out there at least one night a week and it'd be nice to have a place to grab something to drink.
I mean, I don't have an issue with the whole, I'm just saying that how is it, how was this request driven while we're trying, we're bannering over now? We've come to a point of saying, well, do you, can we turn it off and turn it on? If the whole concern was, is it going to be in conflict with what is going on with the soccer? You know, someplace, last time I thought we were kind of in agreement about it. Now we're coming to a point where we're talking about, well, are we, is it going to be on intermittently or can it be done? Or is it now, now we're talking about conflict and being in conflict with the Soccer Association? I guess that's my question.
I guess my concern is, is, I mean, if you guys had reached out to JSA, I'd like to hear what their thoughts were, just to see if they're on board, since you've been somewhat competing with them maybe on a, you know, certain times throughout the year. And then I guess the other concern as well is just, do we, you know, the vending contracts, is that normal to get into a new bid situation? I mean, that's, what are we currently doing? I guess it's my first question.
Well, I think it's important to keep in mind, we did not do this out because no one has ever approached us about doing it. They approached us.
Well, yeah, but they might approach us if we put it out for bids, like anything.
This is for one year. I think the idea was, much like we did initially with Hamilton's and then with Butch, the same arrangement where we got someone in to do it and then we can, we want to put it out for bids thereafter. Whatever the council wants to do, if these are the only, this is the only time we've had any interest in it that came to us.
Just as a side note, I deal with these people and they manage a huge amount of money for the city. And their integrity is the other approach.
Oh, no.
If they say they're going to do something, they'll say, they'll do it and they'll do it right.
I'd just like to hear what JSA has to say, I guess.
And I, and I don't disagree with what you're saying. I, I...
No, I understand, yeah, yeah.
I guess my question is, if it's driven by, you know, it was about the kids at the very beginning, an opportunity to have something out there because it, the kids didn't drive the request, so to speak. I guess that, I mean, that organization didn't drive the request. That's what we know it's asking. And while I'm starting to listen to Alderman talk about, well, can it be, you know, all of these things, can it be turned off, turned on, because it's in relationship to, if it's in conflict with the organization? That's the only thing I'm saying. So are we at that point or, you know, or?
I think it boils down to Casey's closed. They saw a need for refreshments for the kids. I would like to think that the parents would encourage the kids to go to the Soccer Association while those vending machines are sitting there. I think it's pretty simple, really.
So, I mean, that's the only question I'm asking.
It's a good idea, Mom, that.
Well, the organization, they're trying to raise money.
One thing, the concessions only open on Saturdays. Every other day, there's no, there's no concessions conflict. So one out of the seven days is what we're, the confliction would be is, and I don't know if every Saturday they're open. My kid's a little bit older in life, gotten out of JSA, but that's the only day that's, that's the conflict is one.
I think, like I said, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
And we're, it's on the agenda because we're entering into a contract. So, you know, it's on the agenda. You like it, both, yeah. Good. Thank you. City Attorney Report.
Thank you. We've got one item, easement for Scott Morgan Green Water Cooperative. This is for a very short distance and I think it's by the Boat and Ski Club on the north side, on the north side of the lake, on West Lake Road.
I think south.
Yeah.
Boat and Skiing.
Sure.
Southside, yeah.
It is on the north side of the lake.
This is right by there, running, they got a water line just outside there to extend it onto their property. There was a drawing that was attached to the materials that supposedly were set out, fairly routine, just to get water over there. It's a very short distance for a cross-city property to get the line extended. Any questions on that at all? That'll be up to you to answer.
Dan, Committee Reports, Finance, IT and Personnel. Who wants to handle that? Alderman Williams?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have just one and that's discussion amending the positive order.
That would be, in the municipal code, there's a section on approved banks that we can use, okay? Those banks have to submit what's called Statement of Conditions to the Board. In the process of getting it from these banks, there's some banks on there that we no longer do business with, or a bank on there that we didn't, that's changed names. So what I'm asking the council for is to delete PNC, Pittsburgh National, which is no longer in town, Illinois Public Treasurer's Investment Pool, US Bank, which we no longer do business with, and to add Bank of Springfield, which I thought was already on there, it's only skipped, but evidently not, CNB, Carlinville National Bank. That one's kind of a, we don't have much of a choice because it's happening sooner than later. Jacksonville Savings Bank is going to be CNB, so it's either do it now or maybe we're going to have to do it later or we have to move a bunch of money. And change Premier to County Penitentary. Those are the requests I'll make in the end.
Yeah, I, I mean, if there are no questions on that, also under Finance, just to update you, we are already proceeding with the economic loan, I'm sorry, revolving loan fund law with the golf courts. The figure we worked out with John, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. It will be two and a half percent for thirty years, a seven-year balloon. The seven-year balloon is in keeping with what we do. Thirty-year amortization's a little bit longer than we've done before, but that is to, his whole point was to get, his payment's low enough so we can try and make a go of it out there. We will have a second mortgage on the facility as well as on the other one. And...
Some of those terms are a little different, but they're all within the power of the council to grant. And the other thing is there's no backing financial institution, which is within the power of the council to grant. It does set something to precedent, but again, you have to take these things individually, one situation at a time, and in the situation, this is the best solution to it, it appears.
Have we done this before?
Parts of it, Bill. Not thirty years on revolving loan, and one other instance of without a bank.
Last time you said the fund had a hundred and eighty-three or a hundred and eighty-six thousand?
Currently a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-six cents.
Was it a hundred and eighty-three last meeting or a hundred and eighty-six? What was the last?
Probably a hundred and eighty-three last meeting.
It was a hundred and eighty-five at the last meeting and it's been since added.
So just two dollars to add.
I have, I have, I have a formal request from Adam Jamison for his, Jamison's Future Swings, backed up by a firm letter from his bank, backed up by his application being filled out incomplete for roughly forty-two thousand dollars.
And that's for what?
Jamison's Future Swings.
The baseball.
Former All-State pitcher for Beers Town College pitcher, a couple, they're going to start a facility where they offer clinics to children as young as five, as well as training middle and high school students at the elite level, collegiate athletes in preparation for professional play. He's bought a building, the old Braemer Building out on West Morton. He's already got a ton of money in there. He can use more money to finish it, finish it up.
He felt deals there is a niche there. A lot of kids travel to Springfield for training and he wants to grab the regional kids and keep them here. Good idea.
His banker loaned him four hundred grand on the building.
Good idea.
We'll have this one.
At the next meeting, I'll have him here to answer any questions. But, you know, he's asking for roughly half of what is, half of his additional cost are, which are going to be roughly forty-two thousand. Which would leave with the hundred and twenty-five and the forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, roughly eighteen to twenty thousand dollars in the total.
Did the restaurant ever come back to you? Why do you think that restaurant never come back to you at all?
No, 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 the other ones, none of the other ones have come back. None of the other ones ever got as far as he did, as far as a letter from his banker and filled out applications. This is, I met with him as early as, recently, this afternoon.
I think, I think you have it, you use it.
I don't know the gentleman and, and the, the mayor knows him.
We know his wife, Kristen.
Kristen Jamison, yeah. They, I asked him if he was a Cub fan or a Cardinal fan. He had the wrong answer. He was a Cub fan.
Oh, man.
That's not, yeah.
It's not on the board.
No, it's not on the application, so.
Reimble that, Mark.
So, yeah, thank you.
Parks and Lakes, Alderman Wormowski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to report on the meeting that we had last week about the pool study. Alderman Richardson was there too. You can fill in as well if you have some additional comments. So we met with Jeff, the consultant from We Design Pools, Water Zapped Aquatic Design. If you see inside your packet, there's a handout we had during the meeting. He gave a presentation about various features that they can add on to the pool and explain the benefits and costs in general about each one, about how it could attract people and change the, change, make improvements to the attraction of the pool of people in town. One of the things he said during the meeting too was that he's not looking at a total rebuild of the pool or for tearing down an existing pool. He thinks everything that's currently indicated says that we can remodel and enhance the current swimming pool into an aquatic facility. He was going to get together with local engineering firms to test the pool shell to make sure that it'll hold up for the future. Alder, or Skip also asked a question about liability with some of the add-ons and he said nothing that, no feature that he's proposing for the pool has the same risk as our current high dive. So everything he's doing is relatively safe. Subsequent to, he was going to prepare an online constant contact survey and send something out to get community feedback for what we could do. But subsequent to that meeting, there was some discussion about, we want to make sure that we have community support for doing any sort of project. So first he's going to do the testing of the, of the pool shell and have some more discussion with Adam and Kelly and everyone and try to figure out what the community's ready to do. Alderman Richardson, is that missing anything?
None. Other than the, oh, you mentioned the survey?
Yeah, that'll, that'll become soon. Really, I think one of the best parts of the meetings is that Alderman Oldman came with her two kids and they were sitting there with, they were being nice and quiet with their screens in their hands. And as soon as they got handed a survey about what they wanted in the pool, they put down those screens right away and were really engaged in the conversation. So that, that's exactly who we're building the pool for is, for youth and give them something interesting to deal with in town. So I really enjoyed that part of the meeting.
Very good. Any questions for Steve or anybody? Good presentation. Utility, Alderman Womple.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight we have three items. Number one, discuss copying machine lease for administration office. Sally?
I think I've probably overwhelmed you with details already on this. What started out as, a couple of years ago, we got a new printer. Aaron, our IT person, he was the one that went out, looked for the best printer, the cheapest price. But what happened is that the toner cartridges were just so expensive that I was either going to have to try to find a different printer or do something else. And then that's when Rex and Skip had mentioned, why don't you look at leasing a copy machine? So by doing that, we're saving quite a bit of money. We're saving about two hundred and fourteen dollars a month. And that doesn't include our yearly maintenance that we do on the printer. So it's, you know, really good, I think a good solution for our office. I don't know if anyone has any questions on that?
How much do we spend, sending statements out each month, do you know?
Yes, I do. Let's see. Now this includes, now this is going to include postage, it's going to include our billing forms as well as our past due statements. So we do send out two different statements. And then also, I just included the copy machine lease that we would have in place if we got this copy machine. It would be around forty thousand, six seventy-eight per year.
Per year.
And then I also did a little research because I know you were kind of looking into, like the E-bill. And so I was doing some more research. I'm glad that it kind of got brought up, so I had some information. This was at the end of 2017. We're still really paper driven and it's just the society that we have. Sending E-bills out would be amazing if we could get by with it because it'd be really cheap. But right now, we still have seventy-six percent of our customers that either come in and pay, pay by mail, we have a lot of mail payments, or they use our night drop-off box. So they're still really paper driven. And we have found that if they don't get a paper bill, like if the post office loses their mail, we don't get a payment. It's just like they have to have that paper bill. Now, if they didn't have the paper bill, then they might be mailing a check in without their payment stub. So we might, there might be room for error on our part saying, what are you paying? You know, is, you know, what, what address? If somebody comes in through the drive-through or they pay inside, we still need a payment stub to go with the payment in our drawer. So if they didn't have the payment stub that we printed out and mailed to them, which they usually bring in, then we have to print a paper stub. So we're still, we're still very paper driven, you know, which maybe is a little behind the times, but it's, it's still a huge practice. Now, you know, maybe we could start doing a little more promotion because we do have, we don't have a lot of people, shoot, I think we only have like a hundred and fifty out of our seventy-five hundred customers that are doing E-bills only. Some people are doing E-bills, but they still want the paper bill because you have an option of doing either E-bill by itself, E-bill and the paper bill, which I do monthly just to make sure my E-bill looks okay every month. But, so we're, we don't have a lot of people that, that want that, that feature yet. Now, I don't know if we promote it more because you guys didn't even know it existed. You know what I'm saying?
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess, I do paperless on a lot of options. I work, I live in other municipalities that already had it ten years ago.
Yeah.
And it's an option. You don't have to do it.
Right.
But if it's there, a lot of times I'll go ahead and do paperless, but they'll usually send me an email notification. I can just log in right there.
Yeah, and that's what we do. That's what we are.
Right, right. And so, but, but then there's not a paperless option, correct? You still get the actual?
No, there is. You could have completely paperless or you can say, I want an E-bill sent to me, but I still want the paper bill.
Right, maybe we need to promote it a little bit more, just send something out there.
Right, we can because I think that there, it's kind of glitchy when you guys don't know about it. You know, so it's kind of hidden, you know, the depths of.
So I can sign up and I won't get another bill in the mail?
Yeah. Like, if you go on, our online payment website, it's kind of long, but it's on the bottom of your bill and I can get it to you if you want. But you can just log on and then it's, it's a really nice website if you haven't gone on to it because it shows your history, like your payment history, your water usage history. It's got a lot of information on there that sometimes you might want that you, you know, that you don't have as, you know, like it'll be right at your fingertips instead of maybe looking at.
No, I think it's great because it would save the city money as well.
Right, right. Yeah, you know what? And our online payment website actually saves us a lot because we're not handling all those payments. So, you know, if we maybe push it one step further, and we will, you know, I'm glad that you kind of brought that up because sometimes we know what we've got, but we forget that you guys don't know what we've got. We know the general public. So we'll kind of promote that. We'll try to find a nice way maybe of promoting the whole payment website and, and the features that it offers.
Yeah, because people ask me, why don't you guys have paperless? And I didn't realize we did.
Right. And I said, that's pretty bad if the whole general public, especially you guys, don't know. So we're not doing a very good job in our office promoting some of our features. So we'll work on that.
We'll put you on what's on your mind.
Oh, gosh.
Thanks, Sally.
But I, I think, I know all the other departments have their own contracts, the lease and equipment or whatever, but I think it would be, I know that they're not all going to follow the same industry. But I think it would be very interesting if we could get a bid on the whole. But I think it would be very interesting if we could get a bid on the whole city. Because if we're saving that much money in her department, what can we save? So, Skip, he can work on that. You're the best at that.
Skip really is good at negotiating.
It'd be great on our website, here, sign up for, you know, bill us, you know, bill us payments for.
You know what, then I'll do that, because right now, I've got, if you go on, you can click almost anywhere, everywhere to get onto our online payment list. I've tried to put it on every page in the utility area, you'll see it's almost overly redundant. But I haven't done anything about, like, the billing, so let me, I'll go in and add some of the features to that. So, we'll promote it. That was a good point, thank you for bringing that up.
Number two, discuss engineering agreement for Northwest Street Water Main Replacement Project.
Um, this engineering agreement has been revised due to the increase in the scope of the project. Originally, it was just going down Northwest Street, and Jax decided, let's go on down Lafayette to see me. And this proposal covers both cast game, B, survey, and design for plans and specs and permitting. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Number three, presentation regarding the watershed project. And yeah, that's where from, water and.
All right, we'll all try and keep this as quick as possible. So, I'm gonna just give a wrap-up of the, of the project we started several years ago to help reduce sediment and nutrient loading to the lake. Uh, it was a Section 319 Illinois EPA grant. Uh, the watershed, so this was for Mobistar Backup Water Supply. Very highly erodible, all sorts of nutrients and sediment enters the lake on annual basis. The project area comprises of this part of the watershed, this is the Town Brook watershed there. So, looking at about twenty-one thousand acres watershed area. Project summary, so the grant itself, which was awarded back in 2015, a total project cost of six hundred and eighty-seven thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. So, the, the grant covered sixty percent of that, and a combination of landowners and the city put in the remaining portion, essentially the city put in twenty percent of this. Uh, so, we spent, so we, total project cost was this, we spent six hundred and eighty-five thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-two cents, which was a little bit less than what we got the grant for, but it's only a couple thousand bucks, so I think for a, a project of that size, that's pretty darn good. Thirty-nine thousand dollars went to project management, that, the city picked up forty percent of that project cost. That included doing months of paperwork to the EPA, developing final report, negotiating with landlords, driving back and forth, inspecting practices, um, reflagging out things and so on and so forth. A hundred and ten thousand dollars went to survey and design, and to have engineers seal each and every individual plan for each practice. That is about ten thousand dollars under budget. Was able to take about ten thousand dollars of the original engineering budget, turn that into on-the-ground work. So, we got more on-the-ground and less in engineering fees. Five hundred thirty-five thousand nine hundred seven hundred ninety-six dollars and twenty-two cents went to construction. That was about ten thousand dollars more than what we had originally budgeted for because of the shift, because we came in under budget on engineering, and we had more projects, so we put more money on the ground. Awarded in 2015, work, actual on-the-ground work began in October 2015, and then everything was completed in December of last year. Uh, and that, so it's a two-year project, grant project, we asked for a six-month extension that got us through December of 2017. Okay? Uh, so, sixty-six, uh, projects, uh, total projects, these involved multiple practices, and I'll go into that in a little few other slides. Nineteen individual landowners participated. Uh, the lake impairment, so your lake is impaired for phosphorus, nitrates, sediment, turbidity, dissolved oxygen, manganese. Well, it was for these before, then you added TMDL and it came off the list. It's also impaired for hexachlorobenzene and some other pollutants as well. These two pollutants are still on the impaired waters list for your lake. Uh, we directly address the turbidity and the dissolved oxygen. Dissolved oxygen is really a function of nutrients, nutrients uptake of oxygen in the lake. So, by reducing nu- ox- uh, nutrients, we're also reducing the, or increasing dissolved oxygen ideally. So, what did we install? So, twenty-four thousand three hundred and thirty-six feet of water and sediment control basins were built, and these are earthen burns that run perpendicular to how water flows, that stores the water, slowly releases out through this pipe here, as that releases, sediment drops out. So, they have about a sixty-five percent removal efficiency for sediment, so sixty-five percent of the sediment that hits this basin will filter out instead of going into the lake. Uh, they're about thirty percent efficient at removing nitrogen and about sixty percent of removing phosphorus. So, really good practice for keeping sediment out of the lake. Oh, that's a lot of feet of basins. Here's another example, uh, earthen burn and a riser. That water pounds behind there and is stored for roughly eighteen hours. Uh, we did nineteen point three eight acres of grass waterways. Uh, this is, this one is well up in the headwaters of the watershed, several others throughout. It's a good example of water, it needs a little bit of seeding touch up there. We did four hundred and twenty acres of cover crops, so these is, these are temporary covers. They were all rye grass that was planted in the fall of last year and then the year before. Uh, and the idea is you have cover on the crop ground during the period of year where you get the vast majority of your runoff and your rainfall and your erosion. Uh, those crops are, are covered with, um, with, uh, rye grass, they, those sequester nutrients, and they help to build soil health and et cetera, et cetera. We did a hundred and seventy acres, uh, twice on Gordon White's ground, and then the remainder was a one-year, uh, cover crop on, uh, on Jim Freeman's. And a lot of his ground was highly erodible ground, very steep, uh, helped keep quite a bit of sediment out of the lake for the year that they're in there. Hopefully, Jim keeps doing, uh, the cover crops.
Oh, I was gonna ask you how long will he continue to do that?
I, I'm hoping he can do, so the funding isn't there for him, but I'm hoping he continues to do it. Uh, Gordon White should be doing it for multiple years. So, part in negotiating some of the practices with him is he would do, uh, cover crops for about ten years on some spot. You're gonna see cover crops like this, you should see, and I'm gonna keep on them, on Gordon White's ground there on South Jacksonville, right, uh, for multiple years. He's, Gordon's been doing it for a number of years, I think he's sold on it. Really, to get a landlord to commit to cover crops, he needed to be doing for about three years. To get all the kinks out first.
So, how, how many acres is Freeman?
Uh, Freeman is the, so a hundred and seventy acres minus, four twenty minus seventy acres would be the remaining on Jim Freeman, whatever that is, from three, two eighty or something like that, around that, on three different fields, all on the south side of the inter- interstate. You can't quite see him from the interstate, he's kind of on the other side of the hill there. We did a lot of practices on Jim, Jim's ground too. Seventeen gray control structures and rock riffles, so these are, there was a big massive ditch here before. This area here, this is on, um, Mark Ginder's property, it drains, oh, probably about four hundred or five hundred acres. There's a big ditch here, cutting into the creek, this stabilizes that ditch, and then there's a waterway upstream of that, we put seventeen of those in. And here's another couple pictures, this is another good example of a great, we call this a block chute, but this is an outlet for a waterway as well, there's a big cut there that provides a stable outlet for the water. And then you don't have that ground cutting back up into the field. And then here's an example of, this is a rock riffle, and these were done on Jim Freeman's ground. So, this, this is a channel, very steep ground, uh, the channels are cut, cut down, so what streams do is they're trying to get to the lowest point, right? So, what they do is they cut down, as they get deeper, the banks fall in. The idea with these is to kind of stop that downcutting, uh, in its place. So, you raise the elevation of the creek, water backs up behind here, slowly drops out sediment, and that channel, there's a series of these up through that draw, and that draw becomes stabilized, within five years, you probably won't even see those anymore, and they'll have a nice stable, a nice stable ditch in there. That, those practices saved several thousand tons of sediment from getting into the lake. Uh, two thousand one hundred ninety feet of surface drain, so there are cover crops in this, so this is why I negotiated with, um, Gordon. He should, he's supposed to be putting cover crops in this surface drain for the next ten years, at a minimum. Uh, and then, so what this is, so this is a really flat area, that it was too flat to put a waterway. Um, because what happens when you, when it's too flat and you're trying to put a, a grass waterway in a, a flat area, that sediment will drop out too much, and then it'll fill up, and waterway need, you need to be able to move the water. So, this is just at, at an excavated swale with a wide bottom, very, uh, low slope. There's a big ditch here before, now that water can spread out, the velocity reduces, and you're not getting the cutting. Achieves the same, similar thing, uh, you don't get a lot of the erosion. We did two sediment basins and one pond. This is on Ed Becker's ground, uh, should be nice and full by now. Uh, this drains, uh, a pretty heavy feed, cattle feed area, so it's keeping a lot of phosphorus and waste and, and sediment, et cetera, et cetera, out of the lake. This is an example of another sediment basin, uh, this is the pipe here in a berm. This is at the top of one of Jim Freeman's ground, uh, there was a big ditch here before, now that stops that ditch from cutting, stores water temporarily, and keeps it from ripping down that draw too quick. We did one livestock waste management system, so this is on Ed Becker's as well. And this is a, uh, he has a feed area here. And so, before we did this, what we had was, we had all that livestock waste would just go right into the creek. So, we built a, a concrete pad in his feed area, so he can, uh, he can scrape out manure, uh, built this concrete, uh, structure here with a little outlet pipe. So, when the runoff, the runoff comes from here, it comes from the barns, hits here, the solid settle out, whatever's left goes through that pipe and then filters down into a constructed wetland, so this is below. You can see some of the, uh, wetland plugs we put in, well, it's kind of hard, but these are wetland plugs here. Uh, that wastewater from the, from the livestock operation goes, there's no outlet pipe here, there's just a spillway, so every bit of runoff that comes into this is stored. Ideally, within the next couple of years, those native grasses and plants should come up and filtering out that, that waste, before it would just go right into the creek.
How long's that hold, do you know?
Uh, it should, it, it should hold a twenty-five, a twenty-four hour storm. Uh, there's just not a lot of drainage that comes through there, so we're not dealing with a lot of area where the water flows. It's just a, it's a concentrated waste area, so, so this was engineered to store as much of that water as, as possible, or all of the water, before it actually goes over the spillway. I, I'd like to come back a little, in the next couple of months and see how those wetland plants have come up. Uh, and then we also did fifteen hundred feet of terrace repair, this is hard to see, but this is right off of, oh, man, that old abandoned building on the outskirts of town, right before you get in. Yeah, right by your, uh, dewatering basin, that same field upstream of there. So, what happens is that water comes across here, that comes from this way down, these are terraces here, and what they were doing is they were hopping the terraces and creating ditches, so we just rebuilt those. Those were, this was the last project we funded, we had a little bit of money left, and, you know, it was a viable project, it would have saved sediment, so we just did a basic terrace reconstruction there, so the water goes into the grass ditch instead of gullling through the field. So, what did we achieve? So, annual, this is, these are modeled loads, annual reduction slate, four thou- this is every year. With these practices, what you're achieving, most of those practices have a ten to twenty-five year lifespan. Four thousand five hundred and thirty-four pounds of phosphorus not entering the lake. Sixteen thousand seven hundred and, six hundred and seventy-four pounds of nitrogen not entering the lake. Two thousand two hundred and seventy-four tons of sediment not enter the, entering the lake on an annual basis. So, based on the initial, in order to get the grant, we had to, we had to tell the EPA, this is what we want, we think we're gonna achieve, these are the reductions we can achieve. So, based on what we did do, and what we told the EPA we wanted to do, we achieved an, an additional six percent reduction nitrogen, so six percent more reduction than we had proposed, because we got more projects in, nine percent more phosphorus reduction than we had proposed, and twenty-four percent more sediment reduction than we proposed in the initial grant application. So, we spent less and achieved more.
Is there any life limit to that? As time goes on, will that be less?
Uh, after ten years, it will become less, because most of those practices, they, they will maintain their efficiency for ten years. After ten years, if they're not maintained properly, they will, actually quite quickly, the efficiency will go down. So, uh, the landowners of all signed maintenance agreements, they're supposed to be cleaning out these basins. Uh, most of them will do that, because they don't want to have to rebuild them. It's really easy to clean out those water and sediment control basins, for example. The ponds, the big, uh, retention structures and that waste structure, those are designed to be as, that efficient for twenty-five years. So, pollut load reduction, so the red are the, so, in 2010, a, a company calculated how much of a reduction your lake needs in sediment, phosphorus, and nitrogen to achieve water quality standards, to meet the water quality standards. Fifty-three percent cent reduction in sediment is needed to do so, fifty-three percent reduction phosphorus is needed to do so, and fifty-seven percent production in nitrogen. This project attained four point three percent of the fifty-seven, seven percent of the fifty-three percent needed for phosphorus, and achieved twelve percent of the fifty-three percent needed to meet the water quality standard for, for sediment. So, you're quite a bit of the way, I mean, there's still a long ways to go. Uh, but that, with this project, that's how, what you're able to achieve towards your goal of removing the lake from the impaired water bodies list. So, that's what we've accomplished, that's what we did. Any questions? And I gave Mike a couple of copies of a, a final report, I've got that in the form, anybody wants it, I can email them a PDF, but there's a couple of copies there, yeah.
So, what's the state of the EPA, and what do you need from the city to do the next stage? To get, go for the next 319 grant?
So, this budget's fine, so, uh, Trump signed the budget, right? Which was a huge mass of budget, the 319 program at this point is fully funded for FY18. FY19's a whole different ballgame, you don't know. Uh, but this next year coming up, there, they should be funded at the rate they were a year ago or, or last year or this year.
So, can you, can you work with the state to get another stage done?
I could, I could.
Is your deadline August or something?
The deadline's August, uh, so, there's a couple of ways you could go about doing it. The easiest way to do it would be to build a, something on city-owned property. We did a feasibility study of putting an in-lake sediment dam in. Uh, it will achieve very large reductions in sediments, very costly project. But it will, it will retain and store a lot of sediment and phosphorus and nitrogen. That's a very costly project, could be upwards of a million dollars, the state would be on the hook for forty percent of it, so that's option one. Option two would be to go through a process of negotiating with landowners to do this exact same thing.
Where are you talking about that structure being?
Uh, on the upper end of the lake.
Well, can you, can you explain from, just like, we don't know anything, just like, explain what the whole thing is?
So, the idea of putting an in-lake sediment dam with something, uh, either an earthen berm or a sheet pile structure that's roughly two feet about, above normal field, pool, two or two and a half feet above normal pool, and then excavating deeper area behind that dam, as that water comes in, the velocity slows down, the sediment, the phosphorus drop out. So, that would, we estimated that it would retain roughly thirty to forty percent of sediment coming into it, uh, about the same amount of phosphorus, and probably about twenty percent efficient at the nitrogen, removing the nitrogen coming in. Now, that would be something you'd have to clean out, but it's far less expensive to clean that out than it would be to dredge your lake. So, see, so your watershed's, uh, delivering roughly twenty-two or twenty-three thousand tons of sediment per year to the lake, so you're cutting about forty percent of that out, uh, and that would be depositing behind the in-lake dam instead of going into the main body of the lake, along with phosphorus and the nitrogen. So, that's the, uh, one option. The other option would be to, uh, negotiate, I'd have to go out, talk to farmers, build a list of practices, um, and, and get a, a whole new group of producers on board to do a lot of the same stuff we, we did in this last one. That one could be a little bit more problematic, I mean, it took a lot of work to get all these nineteen guys on board in the first place. I'd have to essentially go out and do that again. So, those, those would be the two options. I mean, personally, I think, I, I, I like the idea of doing watershed work, but I, I really do think you guys need an in-lake basin.
So, where that dam, did that go by Country Club to where the dog park is, or?
Yeah, probably a little bit more upstream, I'd have to.
Towards Woods Lane.
Yeah, toward, more towards Woods Lane. It's a little bit challenging, because it's so flat down in there, uh, and you can't really build, uh, build up that tall of a, a, a structure. So, you, so we're recommending you actually do quite a bit of excavation behind it to get some more storage. The deeper the areas behind it, the slower the water will go, the more, uh, dropout of sediment you'll get. You don't do any excavation, a lot of that will actually just go over the, over the sheet pile structure or earthen berm.
And what that would do is it would kind of set the clock back, because everyone misses, Mobistar used to go all the way upstream, they used to have water skiing and everything like. Because everyone misses Mobistar. You used to go all the way upstream. They used to have water skiing and everything like that. So it would expand the lake farther to the east too.
Yes. Well, wouldn't do that. I'm not for recreating because it would be kind of a shallow.
I mean visually, it would be, would it be, would it cover up like the existing like, like grassland areas?
Yeah, probably cover up about two feet of that or so. I mean, there's other issues with flood easements and stuff upstream. You just can't build it too tall. Then there's a road there on the south side of it, that road on the south side of it, that's a little bit problematic too. It's still, it would still need to be engineered and all that stuff, but I mean, we believe it's feasible.
But all the details in the, the plan you guys did with the.
Yeah, our feasibility report for it, we have that in there when we did our stream bank survey as well. So I just think from efficiency standpoint, from the money you're spending on it, I think that's actually quite a good use of money. The, the only issue with it is, you know, the ground only potentially paid for sixty percent UPA, you know, up for forty.
And even, and even though that that was covered with water, we could never dredge it again.
You could dredge it again. That would be the idea. And it would be way less expensive and way easier to dredge the area upstream of that, that in-lake dam than the main body. Oh, downstream. No, you could still dredge downstream.
I thought that would be still considered.
Everything he's talking about in this dam is consistent with what our report included ten years ago. So it's very much a continuous recommendation for that as being a good investment to protect that watershed.
Oh, so that makes, that makes sense and being able to dredge that out sometime. We plan that.
And we have the two hundred thousand dollars a year going if they're funded for the, right, to the.
Hundred thousand.
Hundred.
And then a hundred from the water, a hundred from the city?
No.
I like the way you thanked it.
No, it used to be two hundred, so I guess that changed. I mean, they're, we're setting aside money for the next dredging project. So this would make it so that the next dredging project would be a lot less and it'd be a lot pushed back further in the future.
Would the city, once that structure's in place, would the city be able to maintain that ourselves?
Yeah, I would hope so. You'd really want to do that.
No, I mean, is that feasible for us to maintain? I mean, what's, what's it take?
Extension backhoe or something?
You could build a, couldn't you install a water control structure or be able to drain?
It really depends upon the location and the overall dimensions of it as to how much you could do. And this is not something that you would be maintaining once a year. It would be periodically depending upon how, how much the upstream practices that have already been put in place would further reduce it and then what you are actually experiencing in the sediment reduction.
Right. So maybe ten years or every ten or fifteen years.
I would guess it's somewhere in the ten-year ballpark, yes.
So water control structure or might you raise level two feet beyond the dam and then you lower it and you're able to scoop out? So instead of having a barge, just really expensive operator, just do more backhoe?
Potentially. I mean, you could, you could build a wide enough berm there where you could actually get, maybe potentially even get a long-reach excavator in from there to excavate it out. I mean, I would drive something out into the mud flat, eve- even after, you know, when it is dry.
The stability there would be one of the questions for sure.
I said, we could, we could maybe get a cheap thing going, ammo winch and put buckets out of there.
I don't know, brother. That's another meeting.
I do still think you need to work with landowners and the idea of getting cover crops going and stuff. It's just, I mean, logistically, it's between now and August, will take a lot of work to go knock on doors, negotiate the stuff. I mean, these guys want to talk through everything. Between now and August, I think it'd be really problematic to get an application in to do what we did before. I mean, I almost would need, you know, six or eight months of, of planning, plus guys are about to start planting. I'm not even gonna get to talk to them, you know, for another three months or two months. They're gonna be totally busy.
So we can get you start working now for twenty?
Yeah, I think that would be, that would be the best way to do it. It just takes time. I mean, I know Jim Freeman's al- already would do some stuff. He's already got more stuff. There's a couple of guys I can, you know, work with from this last one. There's really only one or two of them that probably wouldn't do it again. The rest of them would do this again. They had such a good experience, so. No brainer for them.
You could do something this year and next year with more money. Hey, while we have you here, we were talking previously about Lake Jacksonville and erosion on the banks. Is there anything you can in general say about like wave action and the boats on Lake Jacksonville?
The other, the other?
Yeah, the other.
So I haven't actually been out, so I haven't seen, is the shoreline erosion bad there? Really bad?
Yeah.
Is it bad? So in a situation like that, wave action, wind action, the areas that are bad are just gonna continue to be bad? If they're not already bad now, that's probably not, that, that stuff's probably not affecting them too much, but.
Because we're talking about, I guess we've been hoping to rip rap for a long time, but it's expensive, but there's other.
About seventy bucks a foot, seventy-five. I mean, if you don't have your own barge and stuff, it'd be about seventy bucks a foot.
Is there other more prospective things we could do out there?
I mean, no wake zones, no wake. I mean, you can do bioengineered stuff, but whether, I, I mean, that probably won't last on a bank that's getting hit with waves and wind and is eroding pretty fast. That'll just tear that stuff out. Hard to establish. I mean, if I was to do it, I'd just rock it.
We have no way coming from the south of these.
I mean, it's, depending on the lake, I mean, bank erosion could be a huge part. Otter Lake, stream bank erosion was roughly twenty percent of the entire watershed sediment load, covering just shoreline erosion. I don't think it's that bad in this. Your, your sediment loads coming from, vast majority from the watershed. Only twenty percent's coming from stream bank erosion. The rest is all runs off the crop ground.
Yeah, Lake Jacksonville, Lake Jacksonville doesn't have an excessive of a watershed. So is rip rap, is that ever possible to get three nineteen funding for that?
Yeah, I mean, Dennis Ross down Otter Lake's got a hundred thousand dollars this year. He's been getting that much for probably the last ten years. Absolutely. Public water supply lake, for sure. I mean, you don't have much bank erosion in Mobistar, actually. It's not a big, big problem. But yes, you can get funding for that. And then what you can do with that too is you can do breakwater. So you set that out, you set it out almost like a pyramid, out, say, ten, fifteen feet from the bank. In behind the bank, these nice transitional wetlands happen. You have a little break in there, so then you become spawning grounds. All sorts of good stuff. It's not just slapped up under, you know, on the bank.
You're saying positive things. You're shaking your head yes. And then, but like with city, we've been bringing our hands up for this problem for a long time, so it'd be nice to be able to do something.
All you gotta do is get a, your permits are easy. You can get.
Plus you got a lot of camping clubs there, so.
Well, all the camping cubs are complaining about the lake disappearing.
You know, you got obstacles there. They're gonna want the boat dogs.
I mean, you're looking at seventy, I would say about seventy bucks a foot realistically to rip rap that.
For a hundred percent cost and we might.
Yeah, for breakwater.
And we might have to do like forty percent of that.
Yes. Now it would be much tougher to get a three nineteen grant for the other lake because it's not. I guess it's kind of your, it's a backup to the backup, isn't it?
Yeah.
So you could maybe swing it.
It's very much part of their water supply.
Yeah, it is.
Very much. So I think it would qualify. We just have to make sure that it was accurately portrayed.
Yeah, take some pictures, quantify. I mean, it'd be hard to get a bunch of money to do that if they're not contributing that much sediment and nutrients. That's the thing. You know, the big cup banks, that's one thing, but a little dinky bank, that's probably not worth it.
Well, I'd like to thank Oliver Wanko. I don't know, I don't remember how you found Jeff, but you and Jenny, Jenny and Art started this a couple of years ago and had some great achievements and it's fantastic.
I, I think the landowners really enjoyed this too. I mean, it was a no, you know, eighty percent cost share. They couldn't, well, they could, they did complain. Yeah, but still, I mean, I think it wa- I think it was a successful project. We got a lot done. It was not, logistically, just not easy, but we accomplished quite a bit. I mean, in terms of actual reductions to the lake, I think we got quite a bit done. And word got around, you know, the next time we should be able to do something similar, if there's interest from the city.
I like the idea of sediment.
Think you need, really need that, actually. And excavating behind, it's a big thing. It's a delta there. The, so the efficiency of, of removing the pollutants from an in-lake dam is much lower. But the thing is, it's treating your entire watershed. It's not treating a five acre area and it's seventy percent efficient. It's thirty or forty percent efficient over twenty thousand acres. So it's just the raw volume of sediment stored far outweighs, you know, even hundreds of these other small practices. It just costs a whole heck of a lot more. Per dollar reduction, per dollar reductions, I think you're getting, doing better off of the in-lake dam, actually.
Yeah.